10-4-8D of the Open Public Meeting Act, the date, location, and time and commencement of this meeting is reflected in a meeting notice, a copy of which schedule has been filed with the village manager and a village clerk, the Ridgewood News, and the record newspapers, and posted on a bulletin board in the entry lobby of the village municipal offices at 131 North Maple Avenue, and on the village website, all in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Please stand for the flag salute.
My flag relates to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So we are starting today's meeting Tuesday, July 18, 2017, with our Ridgewood Planning Board annual reorganization. We should start with the, we're going to start with the reappointment of our council.
I'm going to call for roll call, just so we know who's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Let's do roll call.
Of course. Mayor Knudsen?
Here.
Councilman Voight?
Here.
Mr. Torrielli?
Here.
Ms. McWilliams?
Here.
Mr. Schreibner?
Here.
Mr. Joel?
Here.
Ms. Altano?
Yeah.
Ms. Patieri?
Here.
Ms. Bartow? And Mr. Van Ghor?
Here.
Michael, Mr. Van Ghor is at that for this morning, so he could be a, as well, another member.
Okay.
Just going to get our copy of the Bible. It's not every day we get to swear in the fire chief as a member of the planning board.
I state my name.
My name is James Van Ghor.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Class II Planning Board Member.
The office of Class II Planning Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Somebody hit the alarm. Missy alarm.
Oh, I didn't touch any.
You're just here to watch the fire chief get sworn in as our newest member of the Ridgewood Planning Board. Sorry, I think we're okay.
Over to my chair.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was when they were all jostling around. I think Chris Martin did it. Susan doesn't counsel meetings a lot.
Very slow.
For doing things.
Cannot help her.
Oh, no, no. For the four, you can go all at once.
That's what I'm saying. Okay.
Yeah, that's a different class.
Where's the Bible? We can continue.
I'm changing classes. It's incorrect on the agenda here. I am, but I'm not a continuing class. I'm a new class.
Now we have to do Mr. Voight, Ms. Williams, Mr. Joel. Yes, Joel and Mr. Thoreau. Everybody, Dave Schreiber and Isabella.
Jeff is Class III. All right, Jeff.
All right, so we need our Class IV members to record one on us. Debbie, Melanie, Richard, Joel, Isabella, and.
Like twist.
And everybody raise their right hand, and you're all going.
You are. Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the Class IV Planning Board Member.
Of the Class IV Planning Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, no, no, you got to, you.
Okay, here. Okay, so we first want to do the appointment of Planning Board members? Resolution. So, um, do I have to read the whole thing? So we have a resolution for the appointment of our Planning Board Attorney, Chris, oh,
resolution appointing Chris E. Martin Esquire as council for the Planning Board for the year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Roll call.
One second. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Thank you very much for, although, although it's been one term, we've gone a lot of miles together, and I look forward to you moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one we have is a resolution appointing Glenn C. Kynes of Wiener Lesniak LLP as alternate council for the Planning Board for the year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
No.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Good. So with that, we will move on to nominations for an election of chairman.
I nominate Richard Joel.
Second. Are there any other nominations for chairman? Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I actually just wanted to say that a year ago, when Richard was tasked with this job, we had a lot on our plate, and I have to say that you have done an absolutely outstanding professional job, and I think as you've represented this board and you've handled these meetings with a level of thoughtfulness, professionalism, and kindness actually to our residents, which I think has really been a lot positive for us in terms of public relations and how the board is perceived. So I just wanted to say thank you.
I second it.
That means a lot. It's really a team effort. I mean, it really, it's everyone pitching in. You know, I think it's a real team effort, and this doesn't happen without you guys, so thank you.
And so with that, I'm actually going to throw the whole meeting his way and turn it over to our chairman to continue.
Okay. Our next item will be election of a vice chairman. Do I have any nominations for vice chairman?
Joel Torrielli.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first from Councilman Voight for Joel Torrielli to be vice chairman, and a second from Melanie. Michael, call the roll.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Councilman Van Ghor?
Like a mind reader.
Thank you. Congratulations to Joel. And so can I just say a few words on that also? So I actually just wanted to say how appreciative I am that Joel Torrielli came over to this board, because as some of you know, that he was the chairman to the Board of Adjustment while I was the vice chairman for a number of years, and we're delighted that this past year has worked out so well, and I'm glad that you decided to stay on and will continue. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next item will be a resolution appointing Richard Bogart as Bogart Planning and Design Professional as planner for the Planning Board for the year July 1, 2017 through to June 30, 2018. Do I hear a motion to appoint Ms. Bogart?
Still moved.
Okay, Joel is first. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jeff is the second. All right, call the roll, Michael.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
No.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bogart's appointed as our planner. The next item will be resolution appointing Elizabeth McManus of Clark, Caton, Hints as conflict planner for the Planning Board for the year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Do I hear a motion to appoint?
Still moved. Second.
Who moved?
Okay. Debbie Patieri moved first, Melanie was second. Call the roll, Michael, to approve.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Thank you, Michael. Congratulations. Our next item will be resolution appointing John Jar of Petrie Traffic LLC as traffic engineering consultant for the Planning Board for the year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
It's close, but I'll give Jeff number one.
He can have a second, all right.
Who wants to be first?
He can be first.
Okay, David starts, Jeff is second. Call the roll for a vote, Michael.
One second. Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Jar. The next item will be resolution appointing David Shropshire of Shropshire Associates as conflict traffic engineering consultant for the Planning Board for the year July 1, 2017 through to the next reorg meeting. Do I hear a motion to appoint David Shropshire?
Motion.
Okay, Jeff is the first. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dave is the second. Okay, call the roll, Michael.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
No.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
No.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Okay, David Shropshire is appointed. Next item will be appointments for the Site Plan Review Committee.
Chairman, I'm just going to provide the resolutions as to all the appointments to the secretary now for later execution.
Sure. Okay, last year when we appointed, it was Isabella, Susan, and Jeff were on the committee for this. Do I hear a motion to appoint anyone, or? Is it straight out appointments by name and approval?
It's, yeah, it's a direction.
Okay. I say continue with Isabella, Susan, and Jeff unless they don't want to continue.
For which is that?
It's going to be Isabella, Susan, and Jeff Voight.
For which committee?
It'll be for the Site Plan Review Committee.
Okay. Isabella, Susan, Voight.
Do I have to call for a vote for it?
Just a vote on motion.
Okay. The motion is to have Isabella, Susan, and Jeff appointed as the Site Plan Review Committee. Michael, call the roll for it.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Can I just ask a question? Could there be volunteers for any of these positions, or is it by appointment only? Sorry, I'm just asking a question for the process.
When the chair, actually, he just identified a committee in last year, and I didn't worry about it, and he asked if anybody else is interested. So discussion should be had on these committees. These, at least the ones I see on the list tonight, are all going to be important this year. So I think there, Chair, if you want discussion on this, we can, the board can have discussion on it.
Sure, yeah.
Yes, but I was curious in the process.
Yeah, I was just resigning, because a lot of people kind of don't remember who was appointed on certain things. Sometimes things don't crop up, so I was repeating it, seeing if there was any interest, and then I was just moving who was prior to.
Thank you. Yes, Michael. She's a yes.
Hold on. Yeah. All right, you want to call the roll again on it?
Okay. Mayor Knudsen?
I said yes already.
Oh, okay, so I'm up to Ms. Patieri, yes. Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yeah, can I say one thing while we're doing this?
Sure.
Last year I was appointed on this committee, but didn't anybody ever meet, and it's because then somehow I wound up on historic preservation. So can you be on both?
The answer is you could be. However, there's enough to go around, and there's enough people on the board.
Okay.
Actually, you weren't appointed to historic preservation. We tabled that one. You were appointed on this one.
Okay, good. Because there was a confusion at first. Good. So, yes.
Okay, Ms. McWilliams?
I think yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Okay, the next will be Site Plan Exemption Committee, and let's see.
What is that, by the way?
It actually came up recently, Mr. Voight, in one of our applications. Somebody said variance, we're not going here, and I have to tell them they are, that's the call. In any of that, exempt is actually another term of ordinance as well. Bottom line is, it's a site plan, you look at the site plan overall, and this address the basic issues. This is for specific non-re requirements that the applicant's trying to come forth with, and that's why that committee, they can analyze it, report back to the board.
Yes, give me an example, Chris.
Example on that could be. That's exactly.
Actually, tandem parking was, that was, Beth is actually sitting here too. So the tandem parking would have been an example of a site plan exemption, or it was in, they sought a design exemption.
They didn't need a variance thing.
Correct. It was an exemption, right. Yeah, it was an exemption from the ordinance.
Okay, all right. Got it. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, it's hypothetical, but that's a good example now, isn't it?
Yeah.
And generally, my boards, if I correct it from wrong, it could be different eyes on this board than on the last, on this committee than on the last committee, Mr. Chair, so you get different viewpoints on things from the board.
Is there reason we only have one person listed? Would it be beneficial to have two?
Well, usually the planner, the engineer, and the construction official work with them.
No, I know that, but I mean two members of the board, just in case one is unavailable.
I think sometimes when it's a judgment call, they kind of report back to us on it. I mean...
Okay. And who was on, who was site plan?
Dave Schreibner was.
Oh, okay. You want to still do that?
Yeah, I'll do it. Did you want to continue with one, or did you have a preference for two, or?
I mean, I actually think it might be good to have two, because I think that specifically, well, I'm glad Joel Torrielli is shaking his head, yes. I'm always happy when he is. But I remember, like, even like something like the tandem parking, I think, kind of like the way somebody interprets the code on that, you know, there was a lot of information there, and I think it went back and forth an awful lot. So I think it might be beneficial to have, you know, not just our professionals, but two members of the board on it.
In general, that committee meets during business hours, so that's a consideration for whoever might be interested in serving.
Yeah. I mean, I think like maybe, you know, I don't know how does, how do you feel about that, Joel?
I think it should be more than one person, but I think that makes a lot of sense, as far as meeting during the day. It kind of narrows the pool a little bit, I think.
Yeah, local person.
Yeah, very local.
So was there anyone that's interested on doing site plan exemption? Okay. I'll put other stuff.
Remember, there are a lot of two.
Yeah, I mean, you're kind of a local. I nominate Frances. I'm sorry, you said no. I'm just kidding. She's not here, Frances. Oh, okay. Exactly. All right, so you want to try?
All right, Dave and James?
Yeah, so.
Okay. All right, Dave and James is the Site Plan Exemption Committee. Call the roll for that, Michael.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
No.
Next master plan.
Appointments for the Master Plan Reexam Committee, and I think this is going to be a very important one. So does anyone express interest? I don't think we had.
I think I'd like to have Joel Torrielli on it. Is that okay? I'm volunteering Joel, yeah.
Volunteering me?
Yeah.
Debbie and I both were interested in being involved in that as well.
You could do that, Jim.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a good idea, okay.
All right, so it's Joel Torrielli, Debbie Patieri, Melanie McWilliams, and Mayor Susan Knudsen. The four horsemen there for the Master Plan Reexam.
Yeah, that's us.
So let's call a vote for that.
Mayor Knudsen?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Ms. Bart, Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just.
All right, the next item will be appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission.
So can I just give a little bit of background, how this happened last year?
Sure.
I think last year we were short some members, and we were in a little bit of a pinch, and we were making a determination as to whether or not we needed to pull one member of the Board of Adjustment over. And by law, if you have one member of your Board of Adjustment, you cannot have one Planning Board member representing on, sitting on the HPC. So now we essentially have a full board, so that opens up our opportunity to appoint that one member back to Historic Preservation Commission. It's some crazy little piece, I guess, in Spelandius' law. So in my mind, and I don't know if anyone's interested, but if anyone in particular is interested, but Isabella Altano was the original member of the appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. She brought a lot to the table in her architectural expertise and her expertise in the... She brought a lot to the table in her architectural expertise and her expertise in the architec, historical architecture as well. So, I would think that that would be a perfect appointment in my mind if she feels that she's, can do that.
I can do that.
Okay. I'm listening to somebody else.
Yeah. No, I think that's very good. Okay. Have Isabella appointed as Historic Preservation Commission person? Call the roll.
Mayor Knutson?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Next item will be appointment to the Open Space Committee. Is there anyone that has interest in open space?
Um, well, here's a little bit of a question. I guess it's legally probably not something that's doable because Jeff right now is the council liaison to open space. So, if, if we don't have anyone on the planning board that wants to do that, essentially, would he be interested in doing kind of double duty then because it's kind of redundant then?
I can take that on if that's something, if there's not another volunteer, that's something I could...
Oh, you would want to do open space?
It's probably better to have someone report to Jeff and Jeff work and then report back to the governing body. So, that would make sense.
Okay. All right.
If there's not another volunteer, I'm, I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
Did you? You have to do one. Okay. No. No, you don't.
I'll do it. It's fine.
Okay. So, Melanie McWilliams for the Open Space Committee. Call the roll, Michael?
Mayor Knutson?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
Thank you for volunteering for everybody. The next item will be resolution of adoption in the mass, in the matter of compliance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Items A through H is attached here too for the beginning year, July 18, 2017, through June 30, 2018. So, you have the resolution. People should have copy of this and a list of the meetings. So, do I have a, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Dave is first, Melanie is second. And a vote yes would be to approve. So, Michael, call the roll.
Mayor Knutson?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri? Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yes.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Schreibner. Councilman, I mean, Mr. Van Ghor.
Councilman Van Ghor.
Can you call your chief? You can call him chief, actually.
Is that your nickname?
That's his official title. Can we have this posted, like, in a PDF on the, on the planning board website, right?
Yeah, sure. I think I do. Michael, can you see that the list of meetings is posted on the website?
As a PDF on, under the planning board page. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Okay, that concludes the list of business for the reorganization. Do I have a, a motion to adjourn the reorg meeting?
So moved.
Okay, Joel, do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Melanie, second. Okay, call the roll to adjourn.
Mayor, Mayor Knutson?
Yes.
Mr. Joel?
Yes.
Ms. Patieri?
Yes.
Councilman Voight?
Yes.
Ms. Altano?
Yes.
Ms. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Torrielli?
Yep.
Mr. Schreibner?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ghor?
Yes.
For now. So, Joel won't, Melanie second.
It's like an official title.
Actually, we're a little ahead of schedule.
Ooh.
Taking a nap?
Council's here. Are you going to go?
Um, oh, we're 15 minutes ahead.
So, do we have to...
Does anyone need a little break or anything or?
Water, maybe?
That's all right, good.
Do it.
Ooh.
Go watch the concert in the park?
All right. You want to give a holler or?
Because right, I can hear him. I opened the window so we can hear him.
Just going to get some water.
We just have it on a break. I didn't feel like we'd finally...
He's the oversight.
Yeah. A quarterback.
Well, he's the chair. It's perfect.
Hold on, Mr. Schreibner. You've got to practice. Schreibner.
Yeah, sometimes, uh, if committees will pop up, things like that, sometimes I'm like...
It's hard. Listen, the first time we saw you on this thing, you said...
You can't look at that man and tell me you know. I don't want to like that.
For the record, Thomas H. Brunidge, 301 Route 17 North, Suite 505. Pleased and proud to appear here before this board on behalf of 257 R.A., Ridgewood Avenue, LLC. As the chairman has indicated, this matter has found its way into the queue and eventually found its way to hearing tonight with jurisdiction having been established by virtue of an affidavit of proof of publication, an affidavit of service upon the property owners within 200 feet of the second question based upon a certified list of property owners provided by the village tax office. I would assume Mr. Dole and Mr. Martin will confirm that the board is possessed of jurisdiction.
Yes, and that is also a notice of satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I guess, well, we start this way by saying congratulations to those of you who were elected or assumed positions tonight. I say that on behalf of my client and myself. For those of you who are serving on the board for the very first time, on behalf of the New Jersey planning officials, we welcome you to the course that the planning officials teaches from time to time. As you know, you have a statutory obligation to attend such a course, and I'm honored to teach such a course from time to time throughout the year, so we look forward to seeing you at the course. This last step of a long journey, bringing this site to a point where the property owner applicant seeks board approval for a permitted use under your ordinance, under the B3R zone. The site is an interesting site, a challenging site. It presents a number of issues, but it presents as well some wonderful opportunities. And it is with those opportunities in mind that this application has been put together. You should know that within the last few weeks, my team of experts has had an opportunity to meet with the village engineer as well as with Mrs. McManus. Mrs. McManus issued a lengthy review letter, which was the subject of a rather extensive conversation with the team, I guess it was a week or so ago Friday. A number of interesting observations emerged from that conversation. And candidly, you will hear tonight that there have been some changes, minor changes, but nonetheless important changes, to various plans that were submitted as part of the application. Any of the changes that are going to be described this evening are, in my opinion, subject, of course, to your own board attorney's opinion ultimately, that the changes are not significant enough to warrant renotice so that the matter can and should proceed. So, we expect that over the course of tonight and probably another meeting, perhaps two, the board will hear from a number of witnesses. Our first witness will be Mike Dipple, a civil engineer. We'll present his qualifications to you and ask that you accept his qualifications so that he can testify on behalf of the applicant as a civil engineer qualified in such an area. We also have with us this evening, Mr. Bruce Engelbauer, pardon me, from the architectural firm Minno and Wasco. Minno Wasco has been with this project for quite some time. You'll actually see an exhibit during the course of the hearing, which goes back, believe it or not, to 2012. They have a long, deep involvement with the site and the project as it's evolved. One of the interesting things that's occurred within the last, I guess you could say, year, a little less than a year, because the application originally filed in May of 2016 was deemed complete in August of 2016. And since that time, the applicants had the opportunity to address a very important issue here in the village. I speak to the issue of affordable housing, and particularly with respect to special needs housing. Having just concluded nine years as a board member of West Bergen Mental Health, the last three as chair of the board or president of the board, the need for special needs housing is hopefully apparent to everyone here. It's certainly important. And the applicant has recognized that need and recognized the opportunity to address the need. And so, working with the United Way of Bergen County, we are able to present to Ridgewood an opportunity for eight units of special needs housing with 15 bedrooms of, up to 15 bedrooms. Those units will be creditable, in our opinion, against the ultimate obligation, whatever is determined by the court in the declaratory judgment action, as Ridgewood's obligation towards Ridgewood's obligation to provide a reasonable amount of affordable housing under the case law. So, following Mr. Toronto, we will hear from Eric Keller of Bowman Engineering. Eric will be presented as a traffic expert, parking testimony as well, he'll be qualified. And what you'll hear from Mr. Keller is interesting in and of itself, because as a consequence of bringing the special needs housing into the project, the complexion and nature of the project has changed. And when we apply some of the zoning conditions to the site, particularly parking, we see that in existing situation, that is to say, the current situation on the ground right now, shows 76 spaces available on the site. That is significantly below that which is required by ordinance, but the 76 spaces exist legally and consistent with actions taken by this planning board over quite some number of years. I think Mrs. McManus will confirm that it's an interesting read, going back through the resolutions, taking this way back to the original Seal Fonds building. Some of us have very fond memories of the Seal Fonds building and going down there to shop with wives and children and what have you. But what's interesting about it is that the Seal Fonds building, as it has evolved over the years, with its 76 spaces right now, presents a bit of a parking issue. And by eliminating a little over 13,000 square feet of commercial space, replacing it with the special needs housing, the parking situation comes into a much better condition. And so, you'll hear from the witnesses that the project is proposing 131 total parking spaces, assuming the project is approved. And a professional opinion from Mr. Keller that the obligation of the property owner developer is really 141 units. So, a very, very large shortfall or deficiency is being significantly reduced by this particular project. End of the day, the presentation will conclude with testimony from a licensed New Jersey planner, John Zabo, who's a member of the firm of Burgess and Associates, former planner for the town of Oakland, and I believe, maybe he was the mayor of the town of Oakland, as well as a planner over in Wayne, will testify on the planning reasons as to why the relief applied for and sought should be granted by the board under the relevant criteria set out in the MLUL and in the case law. So, with that brief introduction, with your kind indulgence, we'll call the first witness.
Sure.
Call Mr. Dipple, please.
Michael Dipple, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth, Officer God?
I do.
And just for the record, your name, your business address, and your licensure.
Sure. Michael Dipple, D.I.P.P.L.E. I am employed by L2A Land Design, 60 Grand Avenue, Englewood, New Jersey. I am a licensed professional civil engineer in New Jersey and New York. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers University. I am founder and owner of L2A Land Design, which specializes in site plan applications such as commercial, residential, institutional, just about anything. I have appeared in front of the zoning board of adjustment, as well as many, many communities throughout New Jersey and Superior Court, and have been found to be an expert and civil engineer.
And you're so qualified as a civil engineer tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Brunidge, are you a legal body, are you a client of 70th Avenue LLC, is that correct?
That's correct.
In that capacity, as you're working here, do you kind of have to explain what you've saw, what you've known, and the consequences of the work that you're doing, and what you've experienced?
So, I prepared the civil site plan documents, working with Minno Wasco, the architect. We prepared the set that's on the board and in front of you, entitled Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan: The Enclave at Ridgewood. I've worked on this project for six years now on this, so I've been there from the beginning.
If you're a virgin, if you're a plantor or a board member, I had asked you to your office to prepare two copies of the exhibit set, and premark, in part, as some exhibits, but the producer and source are both registered, they're usually used by board members. Is that in fact what you're telling me now, that you represent the board, that the copies that you're about to hand out are exactly what you discovered?
Yeah, that's correct. They're dated, May 2nd, 2017. And I'm handing them out to someone in the lobby.
What's the revision? Brunidge, all the exhibits are in order in that stack?
Are these, are these the drawings revised on June 28th?
During various days, they were, in some instances, they were, you know, they were in the...
Sixteen.
We get the...
Because that's sixteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, not only the site plan set, but not all of the exhibits.
You want to mark the site plan?
If you mark or certification, like certain, should be reported, and please identify who was the first exhibit.
First exhibit is preliminary, final, made of site plan, the enclave at Ridgewood. This is exhibit A1, and the date on plan is May 2nd, 2017. It revised a section to include special needs housing, as part of the design.
Can you explain and describe the project, who I'm...
For...
...that there, if you remember, what's the other position, place specific reference to exhibit four, five, six, seven?
I'm going to start with exhibit A5, which is a rural earth aerial of the property and surrounding areas. And my document is basically yellow line around the box on the boundary of the site. So, the board can see one property is in, and one property is not. So, looking at this document, you have East Ridgewood Avenue along the bottom, that runs east to west. You have North Maple Avenue running about a third of the way from the right side of the page, Route 507, and that runs in the north-south direction generally. And you have Franklin Avenue along the top, which again runs in the east-west direction. The site, again, is surrounded by this yellow line, includes, this yellow line includes the Seal Fonds building that Mr. Brunidge described. It includes this brown, I'm sorry, this black rectangle, which is currently being used as an artverted dance studio. And then you have another building on the property, which is landmark floors, I believe they do. And you have some parking areas around it.
What, do you need to do something? No, I think I'll mark that with a pen.
It's on. Okay. Okay, so orientation wise, north will be Franklin Avenue, and North Maple will be east, and the municipal parking lots and Board of Education building will be to the west, and of course Ridgewood Avenue, East Ridgewood Avenue will be to the south. The property has three frontages, East Ridgewood Avenue, North Maple, and Franklin. There are driveways to the site on East Ridgewood Avenue. There is one on North Maple Avenue underneath the Seal Fonds building. There's another one in front of the landmark floors to access the back. And currently, there's no access, direct access, to Franklin Avenue. The project does not include the Breakarama site, as you can see, which is at the intersection of Franklin Avenue and North Maple Avenue. From the drawing, you can see that it's almost entirely impervious. I think we're, I can check my figures, but we're in the high 90s on impervious coverage. It's mostly building and parking, asphalt parking. Site generally slopes from North Maple Avenue, and the hill starts to climb in the rear, so the grade increases as you go to the west. It increases significantly as you go from North Maple Avenue to the neighboring funeral home, which is just immediately to the west on the northern part of the site. So, I think that's all I have for that exhibit.
Before you put that down, Mike, I just want to get clear on the record that the site you just described with that exhibit includes lots 4, 6, and 8.01 in Block 3703. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's shown on the cover of my drawings, Block 3703, lots 4, 6, and 8.01.
Great. And I note that exhibit A1 also references the zoning as set forth on the zone map and in the zoning ordinance of the village. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is it?
It's in the B3R Business Residential Zone District.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So, starting with A1, we just have the cover sheet, which is the first sheet, CO1. I'm going to quickly go through the set, and maybe the 11 by 17s will help you follow along, but CO2 is a demolition plan. And this is important in this project because it depicts that the Seal Fonds portion of the building and the parking that's underneath the Seal Fonds is going to remain. It's really from the Arthur Murray Dance Studio to the north, where the site feature's going to be removed entirely. So, the landmark building, the, what is clearly a prior building addition for the dance studio, and all the parking leading toward Franklin Avenue would all be removed as part of this project. So, this is a building addition to the existing building. And what I have done also is put on the easel the architect's rendering, which is exhibit A8. And I'm not going to testify to it. I think Mr. Engelbauer could give much better testimony than I can, but I think, I find it helpful to the board, so you can see from the civil plan, which can be confusing, and I'm going to go through it, and you can see what I'm referring to in elevation. I thought that would be helpful. So, I asked the architect to place his exhibit on another easel. So, moving forward through the set, I start with ground floor site plan. My site plan is a little bit, it's not traditional. I have two different plans in order to describe the civil portion of the site, because we really have two levels. So, what I'm referring to as ground floor site plan is the plan or the improvements, which would be pretty much at the level of North Maple Avenue, all right, which is immediately to the east. So, on CO3, this is what you would see if you cut the building away, and you would look down, and you would see a parking lot with a lobby in the middle. And that on CO, I'm sorry, on A8, would be near the middle of the proposed building addition. So, we have an entrance off of North Maple Avenue and an exit with a right turn only, after speaking with the county extensively. We could access the site, and there would be parking, 46 public parking spaces on the ground floor, which would surround a lobby. Above you would be a concrete parking structure, and then above you would be the residential floors. So, the ground floor would again consist of this square near the middle, which has the parking and has the lobby and some of the amenities, like the fitness center and the club room. Again, this is immediately to the north of the Seal Fonds building, which would remain and is depicted in A8 as existing to remain. So, I'm going to put up an exhibit, which is A2, which is a colored version of the ground floor site plan. So, I could continue my testimony, and you could see maybe better from the dais as to what I'm referring to. So, the ground floor of the Seal Fonds building is a little strange in the front, because when you enter off of Ridgewood Avenue, you have a partial ground floor. You come in, and PNC Bank is using that as kind of their welcome area. It's had different uses in the past, when it was a furniture store, but this is kind of the landing point when you come in off of Ridgewood Avenue. And then you can go up a set of stairs, and there's another level. But I'm still on the ground floor. And then you have some display windows, which are thick, and prior tenants have used those to display products or ads or whatever they have, and that is, excuse me, that's along North Maple Avenue, and that's to remain. It's when we get to the back, we have the new structure, which would be concrete parking on the ground level, and then, of course, the lobby. And then in the front, along Ridgewood Avenue, we would have the streetscape, and we would continue the existing streetscape along North Maple Avenue in front of the Seal Fonds building, and continue that northward toward the Breakarama site, where we would have an opportunity to add some landscaping and other amenities at the entrance to the building. So, maybe the color helps to see exactly what's happening in that, on that floor. The access point again is, continues to be from North Maple Avenue, right in only and right out only. So, it could only be access from the north side coming south along North Maple Avenue. There is an existing full movement driveway along Ridgewood Avenue, which would remain. There are proposed 46 parking spaces underneath the building. As I mentioned before, 38 of the parking spaces underneath the Seal Fonds building would remain untouched. Okay?
Let me just interject a quick question. Hopefully, it'll be somewhat of a clarification. So, the exhibit that you just referred to, the exhibit number again is?
Is ground floor site plan. It's a colored version of sheet CO3.
And you say colored version. I see colors that are somewhat orange on there, and that represents areas of commercial use to continue to be occupied in the Seal Fonds building, is that correct?
Yeah, there's a slight variation in the colors. This lighter peach color is existing building to remain, and the slightly darker orange color is the proposed structure. And as I mentioned, this is the lobby, the fitness center, the proposed club room, there are bathrooms, an elevator, and likely some mechanical space.
And that darker orange represents then the lobby, as you just described it, for the market rate residential above?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I can come back to these. I'm going to leave this on the board. I'm going to slide it over, and I'm going to move through my site, because I want to do the next floor up, because they tie together. So, I'm moving on to sheet CO4, and now some of the building comes into view. And this level of the structure corresponds to a driveway to Franklin Avenue. So, as I said in my opening remarks, when I was, when I had the Google Earth aerial up, that the site has, raises, arises drastically as you go from North Maple Avenue to the back of the site near the funeral home, and that's evident along Franklin Avenue. The slope pitches up as you go toward the King's supermarket entrance and the Board of Education building, and you continue along Franklin Avenue, the grade rises. So, CO4 is a depiction of improvements that are essentially associated with the next level up and linked to Franklin Avenue. So, there would be a full movement driveway on Franklin Avenue, which would lead southward into the site. You would encounter a row of parking spaces to your right. If you continued forward in your vehicle, you would be presented with parking opportunities on that floor. And now I'm one floor up from the previous exhibit that I had up on the board, or CO3. And if you parked in this parking lot in the back, you could enter the proposed structure through a rear door at what's called the first floor. And on the first floor, there would be some apartments. I see seven there, apartments on the ground floor, and then there would be apartments above as the building continues to go vertically.
Mike, let's take a moment, please, and focus on the number of parking spaces in the area that you just described. And if you know, will those parking spaces be dedicated for use by any particular occupants of the building?
Yes. There are 47 proposed parking spaces on this level, and they are designated as residential parking spaces. So, they would likely be assigned to the residential users. There are 37, I'm sorry, 39 market rate units in this building. And then, of course, I haven't gotten to it yet, but this is in the front where the proposed special needs housing would be. So, there are 47 residential parking spaces accessed only from Franklin Avenue. So, anyone using this site would have to enter off of Franklin and exit off of, onto Franklin. And there are 47 parking spaces.
Are there any other significant features that you think should be pointed out at this point to the board?
Well, this is elevated, so we have a retaining wall, which, or a building wall, I should say, which supports the parking along the sides, and it butts right up against the Breakarama. Again, I'm up one floor now along North Maple Avenue. There's a stair tower in the back. There are columns to support the building above, and I'm going to bring up a colored rendering, so we could see that a little bit better. So, as I bring up exhibit A3, which is first floor site plan CO4, and again, it's a colored version of that, maybe that helps to shed a little light on what is proposed at this level. The front would be where the special needs housing is on the upper floors, and that is the Seal Fonds building, so that's this slightly lighter peach color. And as I move into the middle of the site, this darker orange color is the proposed structure at that floor level, which I'm calling first floor. And then there's this darker gray band that comes westward, and that is proposed structure above. So, if you enter this parking lot, you would pass these parking spaces, and you would actually go underneath the upper floors. So, at the upper level, the building becomes an L shape, like a backward L shape. On this level, it's just this rectangle, but on floors two, three, and four, it's this L-shaped structure. So, I did these two plans, and I brought a bunch of easels, so I could have them up, so that it would be easier to describe the structure, because it was challenging to design, and I can imagine challenging to understand at first glance. Parking, again, is depicted in the gray color. Sidewalks are this other, you know, grayish-green color, and then we have landscaping buffering the funeral home to the rear and the back of the Breakarama building along that, along that frontage. So, this only colors the, the site features associated with the first floor site plan.
Mike, I'd like to continue, because I think there's a flow that's developing pretty nicely, but I want to just note for your use going forward here, that that particular exhibit is helpful as we get into a discussion of the number of variances that are occasioned by this particular site plan in particular with respect to side yards and height retaining walls under the code.
I agree. So, moving forward... So this only colors the, the site features associated with the first floor site plan.
Mike, I'd like, I'd like to continue because I think there's a flow that's developing pretty nicely, but I want to just note for your use going forward here, that that particular exhibit is helpful as we get into a discussion of the number of variances that are occasioned by this particular site plan in particular with respect to side yards and height retaining walls under the code.
I agree. So moving forward through the plan set, I have ground floor. Now, as the plan set progresses, I'm doing my grading and drainage, so I broke my setup into two sheets again, and I have grading and drainage on the ground floor, and essentially that's really covered. So we have a few drainage inlets throughout the parking lot. If there's, you know, water that comes in, sometimes it comes in off of cars or, or, you know, whatever it may be. And it's traditional for, or typical for there to be a few area drains throughout the parking lot which connect to an existing pipe out in North Maple Avenue. It's generally flat on this site plan, there's not a lot of relief, I'm underneath another structure, so there's not a lot of feature to it. I'm really just showing ADA compliance and grading the driveway. So I'm really pretty flat on this, on this page.
Point of initial information, your office did prepare at the request of the applicant a stormwater management report, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
That's been submitted to the village and the vendor view.
It has.
You've had opportunity to discuss it with the village engineer?
With the village engineer, I did. We had a slight increase in the impervious coverage. As I mentioned, it was close to 100%, but we did find, we went from 91.89% to 92.46%. So we have a .6% increase. In order to make this structure work, I think the landmark building had a few old landscaped areas in front, or does today. So those were removed. We did find some opportunity for landscaping, but we fell a little bit short. So I think it was agreed upon in principle anyway, that we would, there is a dry well at the site, we would increase the size of that dry well and mitigate any additional stormwater runoff. So I presented this to the village engineer, and that's been the way we've been going forth.
We've, we've kind of slipped into a discussion on stormwater management, and Chris, Mr. Varden makes a, gives me an indication that it would probably be a good idea to have that stormwater report marked for identification, and now ask our reporter to please mark it as exhibit A11, I believe.
So, and-
Allow us a second, please, Mike.
Okay.
Mr. Dippel, was that the A13, 2016 report? I mean, I'm looking at it.
Yes, yes.
A11 it is.
A11?
Right. Are you aware of the report?
I am, yes. That is, it was prepared by me personally.
So moving then back to the testimony regarding the site plan and this particular sheet, which is taking us through the building.
The only other features that are part of this sheet CO5 are the utility connection, so we find opportunities for sewer, water, and gas right here along East Ridgewood Avenue. And we're talking to the utility companies and the village, of course, for water and sewer. So they're really just laterals out to the existing sewers that really service the existing building, and they would be either increased or added new services for the building addition.
Based on those conversations that you've had to date, is there any indication that the building will not be able to be serviced by the sewer, water, or any of the other, any of the normal utilities?
There's been no indication that they would not be able to. There are some prior letters, but working with the village engineer, we feel confident that, that everything can be, that we can provide necessary utilities for this structure. Moving along, we have first floor grading, drainage, and utility plan, and now I'm jumping up to the upper floor. And again, when you get above the parking below, below the structure on the previous plan, again, it gets very flat. Some of this is exposed, and we do have some pitch to it to get to a few inlets. But generally, it's pretty flat in the parking area. It does grade down a little bit to Franklin Avenue to catch the grade, so there'll be a little bit of slope coming off of Franklin to get you up to a level in which you can cross over and get to the structured parking, which is near the middle of the site. And this is where the existing, along Franklin Avenue, I'm pointing to it, that's where the existing dry well is. So far, the indication has been, let's increase the size of that dry well by putting two more next to it, and that should handle the stormwater management. So we would work with the village engineer if that, after his review, that doesn't, isn't the case, but we feel pretty good about it. We show ADA compliance. There are two accessible parking spaces in the back of the site. There are columns in which the parking is worked around, but there's, there's not a lot to see on sheet CO6. Moving forward through the plan set, we get to lighting, and again, we do, we break the site into two. Lighting underneath this parking structure is pretty standard. Standard parking garage lighting, we use a fixture which is typically used. It's a, it's a linear light fixture by Philips. And then we have some additional building-mounted fixtures in the rear because there is a, there is a set of stairs and a sidewalk which exists today to get up to the upper level, and that would remain. So we're putting, casting a little bit of light back here, so access from Ridgewood Avenue can continue northward through the site to the upper parking level. So there's a lot of connectivity also in this plan for pedestrian activity in and around the property.
Is the, is the lighting that you've proposed as the project engineer and as reflected on the plans that you've submitted, is it compliant with the village code?
Yeah, I believe it is. I had some conversations with Ms. McManus, I believe, regarding lighting, and we do find opportunities where we can shield the sides of it a little bit, and we have run those calculations. We didn't resubmit for just the benefit of time and continuing tonight, but we did find some opportunities just for some additional shielding so that we don't get much throw. But the, the design is really, and it shows up on the next sheet, CO8, more so than CO7, because CO7 is essentially the parking, the interior parking area lighting. But on CO8, we have surface-mounted lights or pole-mounted lights, which are depicted in the middle. That's a standard shoebox fixture. And we have a few of those on the site, and we did find some opportunities to shield those a little bit better, but we're in a downtown commercial area, there's a lot of ambient light, but we're doing our part to keep the light on our site. So again, we did rerun the model, we were able to improve it slightly, and I would continue to work with your professionals in order to get that right. But I think the lighting levels are very good. I think it's a good distribution throughout the property. From here on, I think the plan set gets a little bit kind of technical and boring. It gets into soil erosion and sediment control and things like that, and then we get into construction details. So the plan set is available if we have any questions about that. But in general, it, it's really about the different levels and of the site and understanding how they will be constructed. So I'm just going to remove A1 and put A3 back up on the easel, which are the two levels. And again, I don't have a lot of room because of the camera, but trying to get the building in there. Mr. Engleball's building on exhibit, whatever that was, A8. So you can-
A8 is the rendering?
A8 is the-
Correct.
The elevation view by Minno and Wosko. I think that's A8. Yes, A8.
So Mike, you've basically taken us through the site plan in rather extensive detail, and I thank you for that. I think you've done a fine job, but you've got a zoning table up on the, on the plans.
Yes.
And we are applying for a certain number of variances. Variances, by the way, which, which have been reflected on the, on the plans submitted, but the variances as well are applying for, under the catchall language of the notice, coming about as a consequence of the normal type of review that we had most recently with Ms. McManus and with the village engineer. So let me just ask you, based on the plans, as you see them and the information that you are aware of as of today, the number of parking spaces, total number of parking spaces that the site is providing?
We are providing 131 parking spaces, which includes, again, the existing ones underneath the Sealfons, the proposed spaces underneath the proposed building addition, and the surface spaces which are associated with the first floor site plan. All in total, it's 131 parking spaces.
And do you know, based on your own research or conversations you've had with any of the other members of the expert team, total number of spaces required?
We have a parking table here, which indicates that by the village code, there would be 140 parking spaces required.
I think 141 at this particular point now.
Yes.
We're waiting for Mr. Keller.
We're going to wait for Mr. Keller, yeah.
Thanks. Surface parking areas under the code, section 190, 118.4, point F12B3. Parking areas shall not be closer than five feet from any side lot or rear lot, and we're proposing certain setbacks, is that correct?
Yes, we are, and they exist primarily along the funeral home lot to the west, and along the back of the Breakarama. Technically, I'm within 3.16 feet. So we have noted those in a table here, parking lot locations, minimum of five feet from side or rear lot line, and we're proposing a 2.14 setback to lot 15, which is in this location that I'm referring to, which is to the municipal parking lot. So we're butting one parking lot up against another parking lot. There is a, about a four-foot grade change there, and there's an existing retaining wall. So that, that exists today, so we're just reusing that area. So I have a parking setback of 2.14 feet. I have a setback of 3.16 feet, again, to the back of the Breakarama building, but that's elevated, so we're up, again, kind of midway up the back of the building, and we are 3.16 feet. We have a four-foot setback to lot 5, which is, exists here along the back of the Breakarama. We're including circulation, so we have, we have that, that four-foot setback along the east side of the Franklin Avenue access driveway. And then we have another setback that I mentioned earlier to lot 2.01, which is a four-foot setback. And it's really all driven by the width of this extension toward Franklin Avenue in order to get the standard drive aisle width and the standard parking stall size. We have, we split four feet and four feet, we have eight extra feet, and we split the difference between the sides. So we don't quite comply, we needed two more feet in order to comply. But we have landscaped that area, so.
Okay. The site plan again is that, as you've designed it and drawn it, if you look at section 190-124. Point F2B of the code, the retaining wall setback should be not less than the height of the retaining wall itself, but there's an existing retaining wall, as I understand it. Can you talk to the board about that, please, and explain what we're asking for?
Yeah, there's, there's a number of retaining walls, and we had quite a bit of discussion with your prior planner about the retaining walls, and there's a retaining wall along, I previously mentioned it, along this lot line, which, which divides the site between the village, public parking lot, and the site. So there's a retaining wall there, there's an existing retaining wall that I mentioned, which supports the village parking lot, and does allow the access from Ridgewood Avenue, pedestrian access to continue through up the existing stairs and access the top portion of the site. So there is that pedestrian vertical circulation, you know, without an elevator or something, which exists today, which we're going to preserve. And, you know, there are, based upon the interpretation, there are retaining walls which support the garage, but that's really where the, where the bulk of the retaining wall encroachment exists.
Well, with that four-foot, with 4.6-foot high retaining wall, the applicant is proposing a four-foot high fence as well for-
That's correct.
-security and safety reasons.
That's correct.
So you'd have a total of 8.6.
I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
I said to Mr. Dippel that the applicant is proposing a 4.6-foot high retaining wall with a four-foot fence on top of it for security purposes and safety purposes. Moving on then, maximum retaining wall height under, under 1, excuse me, 190-124.F3C. Maximum retaining wall height is four feet. Again, we just, I think we just really addressed that. Applicant proposes a 4.6-foot high retaining wall with a four-foot fence for a total of 8.6, is that correct?
That's correct, and I note that in footnote number 11 in the middle of the page, I talk about the retaining walls and what we've discovered.
Now, earlier, we made mention of meetings that you and I and others of the team attended with Ms. McManus and the village engineer. One of the comments elicited by Ms. McManus, or given by Ms. McManus, is under section 190-118.4, point F10D, screening of parking beneath the building. Can you speak to that, at least from your perspective as the civil engineer, recognizing that there may be another expert who needs to speak more particularly on that?
Yeah, that's correct. It's, it's an interpretation, and I think the intent of the code was to screen parking so that we're not looking at buildings kind of up on stilts, and we have parking underneath, and your, your streets, your experience as you're walking down the street is not one of parking, but of a building. So along North Maple Avenue, the architect will attest to that, that they've taken great lengths to screen the parking. We do have a situation in the back of the building where we have the building above the first floor parking level, which is this parking shown on sheet CO4 or exhibit A3, where we have building above, but we don't have the screen. It would be impossible for us to screen that parking. It begins near Franklin Avenue, and it extends about midway through the site toward East Ridgewood Avenue, and it passes underneath this overhead building, and it's in that area, I believe, that Ms. McManus mentioned that that is not really screened. And I'm going to leave that to the architect and to the planner to describe, but I believe that is, is where we were referring to.
The architect and the planner, I'm sure will have an opinion with respect to the other comment made by Ms. McManus under 190, pardon me, 118.4, point F12B2, front yard parking. And that is, again, an interpretation issue as to whether or not the area coming off of Franklin leading up to the, to the parking that eventually is under the structure, whether that's front yard parking.
That's correct, and it was identified specifically off of Franklin Avenue. So a front yard would be from the building to the street. Any area in between that is the front yard, not to be confused with the front yard setback. And between Franklin Avenue, we have this access drive, and as you can see from the property shape, which I showed on exhibit A5, we have this, almost like an extension driveway toward Franklin Avenue. There is parking there now, but there's no building behind it. When we propose a building, we technically find ourselves in a situation where we have parking between the building and the right-of-way line, which is interpreted as parking in the front yard. It is not along Ridgewood Avenue, which is the front of the building. It is not along North Maple Avenue, which is the front of the building, especially with the new building addition. The situation only exists on this area of, that extends, of the property that extends toward Franklin Avenue, and the building is set above.
Okay. There's finally one issue which I think is, which warrants some, some attention, and that is what the applicant is proposing, and the plans submitted consistently throughout this past year, is a building which is slightly above the height of the permitted height under the ordinance. What is the, what is the applicant proposing in terms of height? And can you speak to the board and tell the board how you've gone ahead and, based on the engineering work that you've done, determine how we get to that height?
So the allowable height in the applicable zone is 50 feet. So the applicant is proposing a building which measures by your village code- So the applicant is proposing a building which measures by your Village Code to be 54.92 feet, which is 4.92 feet above the allowable, which is a C variance. And that is noted in the bulk table about the six line down, 50 feet permitted and 54.92 proposed. Now, the Village calculates the building height by the average grade, and then you go through a formula and you subtract the average grade from the highest point of the building, and that is your building height. So we went through that exercise, and I have an exhibit which may be difficult. I did not have an opportunity to shrink this exhibit, so I'm gonna, it has a little bit of color to it. It is exhibit A4, and it's entitled Building Height Exhibit. And again, we responded to a comment in Ms. McManus's letter, which asked for the calculation. In other words, the calculation's been on the plans for, you know, six years or so. And the interpretation now, we're in front of this board and the way the building is being presented, we reran the calculation, and I think rightfully so. So what we did is we took points and coordinating with your planner since the meeting and over the last couple of days, we kind of picked points that would be representative. And if you can see them, there's these little red dots, and you're supposed to pick a point that's 15 feet away from the building itself, or within 15 feet.
When you say the building itself, you're talking about in part the proposed building?
The proposed structure. That's correct. And we see that often in codes, you know, I don't have to tell you, but the idea is you don't want to, you know, lift up a site and then say, "Well, my building is so high." Meanwhile, you're up on stilts, so it's common. We see that the measurement has taken some distance away from the structure. So you see these little lines out here with points on them. We kind of projected them on 45-degree angles, and we took the points, and we did 11 points around the building. I believe myself and your planner agreed as to where to take the points to do a fair representation of that, and we came to an average grade elevation of 89.33, okay, which differs by .09 feet from the calculation that's on the plan. And that's because of the new interpretation. But Mr. Engelball, when he testifies the architecture, is doing a building which will comply to 54.92 feet. So there was a slight variation based upon the new calculation, but I don't think it changes any of the plans. We are proposing a building which is, by any calculation, 54.92 feet.
All right. Now, moving along then, the application also seeks some waivers, and I just want to make sure that the site plan notes and reflects the waivers that have been requested. There's been some testimony, I think you just referred to a little while ago, about a drywell. Is that what's commonly referred to under the code as a seepage tank?
Yes. The drywell seepage tank, yes. It serves the same purpose. It detains the flow and allows it to infiltrate into the ground.
So the application and your site plan then reflects that we're seeking relief from section 190-83.E2D2, seepage tanks to be offset 15 feet from a building's foundation. We are proposing to retain the existing seepage tank and slightly expand it, I guess. But that's going to be within, that is within 15 feet of the proposed building.
Yes. Our new seepage tanks will be 15 feet away, but we're connecting to the existing one, which is less than 15 feet away. So we're, anything we propose is within that limit.
The second waiver, 190-84.A, regulates the spacing of trees within the right-of-way. The regulation requires three trees along North Maple. Your site plan doesn't show three. What does it show, and is there a reason?
Along North Maple Avenue, I don't know if my exhibit has it. We are showing opportunity, we have existing planters. We're showing a proposed tree in the center of the site, and it has to do with the spacing of existing trees and the location of the driveway. And we are proposing one new tree planted in the front. Also, if we expand upon that, your planner has requested some opportunity for some passive recreation space, which we intend to comply with. So we do have a lot of landscaping in the front to front the building. Right now, there's really nothing there, other than some old landscaping in front of the landmark. So there's a real opportunity to beef that up, but I think with the tree spacing, we find an opportunity for one tree in the front of the site, and that's the waiver.
And again, I realize that you're not the parking expert by any, well, I shouldn't say by any, you're not a parking expert. You're a qualified civil engineer, however. But your site plan took into account the waiver request from 190-90.B, parking stall size at 9 feet by 20 feet for spaces without a two-foot overhang. Is that, are the parking configurations shown on your exhibits consistent with that waiver request?
They are consistent with the waiver request. We're showing nine-by-18-foot parking spaces where we abut the parking garage wall or, that's really where this occurs, is where we abut either a parapet or on the ground level where we have the parking lot. We would, if you pulled into a space, you would abut the parking garage wall. So we don't have the nine-by-20, I think, which is what the code says. We're using nine-by-18, which is a traditional parking space size. And one of the places where it occurs is underneath, and you can see it's the one extension of the parking, which has only a few parking spaces along the north side.
You're referring to another exhibit which you referenced?
I'm referring to sheet A or exhibit A2, and we have nine-by-18 parking spaces, and there's no overhang. It essentially exists throughout this ground-level, ground-level parking lot where we abut those walls.
Mike, what sheet is that?
That's exhibit A2 and ground floor site plan sheet CO3. And that shows all the dimensions of the parking, nine-by-18 with 24-foot drive aisles, which is traditional in all of these parking lots.
And the chair notes it's the colorized version, so.
That's the colorized version, yeah.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't. I have a lot of drawings up here, but.
Well, let me ask you, this set of plans and the exhibits, other than the exhibit prepared by Bruce Engelball's firm in Owasko, these plans have been prepared by L2A and signed and sealed by you as a licensed New Jersey civil engineer.
That's correct.
They've been prepared consistent with good engineering practice and reflect accurately the conditions that you have described.
I think so.
I have no further questions of the witness at this particular time. We're happy to have the board question.
We'll start with the cross by the board. Dave, did you have any questions for the engineer?
I didn't hear you mention the subsurface utility room.
I mentioned that there would, there would be utilities which would serve the building, which would come from the North Maple Avenue right-of-way.
But in the architectural plans, in the section drawings, there's actually, it's showing a utility room beneath the lowest level of the garage?
I'm going to allow Mr. Engelball to elaborate on that. I haven't really testified to the building interior, so.
Because, okay. No further questions.
Okay. Jeff?
C4, your entrance and exit off of Franklin. Is the intention of people to get into that parking area, is it a right turn only to get in and right turn only to get out? Or do you expect people who are going east on Franklin to be able to cut across traffic and get into that parking area? What's the intention?
We are showing a full movement driveway on Franklin Avenue. Speaking with the county, that's where we stand right now, that it would be no restriction on that driveway. It would lead only to these residential parking spaces. So feeling that the, and I don't want to give the traffic engineer's testimony, but we have worked extensively with the county on all of the driveways. Although Ridgewood Avenue, as your engineer corrected me, in this area is not a county road. It is up to this interchange. North Maple Avenue is a county road, and Franklin Avenue is a county road. So we've been working with the county on exactly how the movements work, and we feel that because of the size of the parking lot and the number of trips, we do believe a full movement driveway is possible. But I'm going to leave the rest of the testimony to the traffic engineer.
I just see some concern, to be honest with you, with people going up east on Franklin and then wanting to turn across traffic there. That's a very busy intersection. That may not be ideal, to be honest with you. The parking area for the Franklin entrance, is that the only access for some of the units? In other words, that's the only way that they can park their car and get to their units? So it's dedicated solely to those units? Is that right?
It is a 47-space lot, which is dedicated to residential parking only, so 39 market rate. You know, there will be eight units, which I guess, you know, theoretically would have two assigned parking spaces. There's a mix of unit size, and perhaps the next space is typically upon request and usually costs a little bit more to get the extra parking space if you're a family with multiple vehicles. So is that the only place they could park? I don't think we've worked out exactly, you know, the parking distribution, but we know that the ground floor is public, so that is for the common use for all of what is proposed. The front portion of the building, which remains the PNC, the special needs, and then the residence, the residential uses.
Okay. Are there service vehicles that are going to be coming in and out of here? Any kind of service vehicles, whether they're, I don't know, even emergency vehicles?
We have spoken to the Ridgewood Emergency Department, and they have told us unequivocally that they would not bring an emergency vehicle into the interior of the building. The opportunity, they could get stuck there. They would have to turn around. In case of an emergency, God forbid, they would halt traffic on North Maple Avenue during that emergency. It's a pretty wide right-of-way. I don't think it would stop the town, but in order to, whether it's Franklin or Ridgewood or wherever the emergency is best served, they would just use the right-of-way and not go underneath. But it does allow clearance for an ambulance, not a fire truck.
So do you envision any service vehicles coming in and out of this facility? And if yes, where would they do that?
We have a loading space proposed, and that is, it's existing, and I don't think I gave it, I don't think I mentioned it in my testimony. Coming off of Ridgewood Avenue, there's a space which is adjacent to the ADA accessible space, and that would remain, and that is a potential loading space should some product come in, whether PNC needs it, whether or not you can move a move-in vehicle and park there and use that space. If you have a small enough vehicle, you can just use a parking space, but if it's a larger vehicle, you could use that loading space. But that is a feature of the site plan. That remains.
I'm not an expert in this, and Chief here can probably provide some more light on this. There's really no space between your building and the Breakarama, right? I mean, you can't even get through there. It's just they're kind of like abutted against each other?
That's correct, and that's actually, it's actually the way the code was written. It's either zero or 12 feet. So you're either zero feet, or if you do setback, it needs to be 12 feet. So we've chosen the zero-foot setback.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any issues with fire concerns with either building?
Depends on how the building's built.
Yeah. Okay. I'll let you ask those questions. The lighting of the buildings, I know you've got a whole bunch of different, C7, there's a whole bunch of different foot candle, I guess, measurements here. Is that right?
Yeah, those are foot candle measurements taken at grade. So that's what you would see on the parking lot level.
Do you envision any issues with any of the surrounding? I think on the other side of Maple, there are some residential homes. I mean, is that going to affect them having this lighting during the evening? Do you know?
No, I would say especially not on North Maple Avenue because the light that is anywhere near North Maple Avenue will be underneath the deck. And again, I haven't testified to the specifics of exhibit A8, but the architect has gone to great lengths to give the building a nice facade and shield that. So no light spillage would really come out of that building. The parking lot lighting is on the opposite side, shielded by the building itself and by the Breakarama building, so. And it would be quite a distance, you know, hundreds of feet across. I think directly on the opposite side, we're mostly commercial with Jersey Mikes. We have the bank. We have a real estate, and then we have medical office, I believe. I don't know if it's, so directly across the street, I don't think there would be any impact, you know, especially to North Maple Avenue. These lights are designed only to project downward and not project out.
Okay. And then on the other side of Franklin, you have a large apartment building. Is that going to be affected by any of the lighting here?
I don't believe so. The first fixture is setback of it, and again, downward illumination only.
I might have one other question. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Chief Benford?
What is the height of the parking underneath? So you said an A melts can get in. What would be the?
It is, I think it's nine feet and six, or nine feet eight inches. I don't have it on my plan. You're going to hear more testimony from the architect. He has a section.
On that drawing next to you there, you have that second-floor overhang.
Yes.
And what's that orange, that little orange spot?
Oh, that's the stair tower. So that does touch down on grade. That's what that is.
So that goes, there's parking underneath that? Is that where that goes?
That goes to the, it does not go down to the parking underneath that. It goes just from this level vertically to the residential floors above. It doesn't go into.
Oh, it goes up? Oh.
It goes up. It doesn't go down to the parking below it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. I had a question on, if we go to, it would be, I guess, CO3 is a place to start. On the west, the backside of the building, the west side of the building, you had this pedestrian, it appears to be a staircase going up. Do you know what?
That staircase exists. That is, that is vertical circulation from the parking area under the seal funds, which is very low compared to the parking area here, which has a difference of about 10 feet.
So just walk me through, kind of, how does somebody access that staircase?
Well, there's actually access from the Village parking lot, so one opportunity, because you can, today, you can actually drive through and actually go through the building and continue.
Right, I'm familiar with that, right.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little short, but you can access that pedestrian-wise, or you can touch grade and then continue up the stairs. You can come in off of Ridgewood Avenue, walk through this parking lot and go up those stairs. Or conversely, you know, there's a parking lot here. You could go back down and go through the site.
And then if somebody were coming in from Ridgewood Avenue and walking to that staircase, there's no, is there a sidewalk in that space?
Yeah, the sidewalk begins right about where the building begins. It's colored here.
Let me rephrase. Is there a, when you're trying to access, as you're walking to that staircase, is there a sidewalk in the driveway?
No.
So somebody has to walk through a driveway to get to that staircase?
That's the present-day condition. There is, there's a, it's not a very busy, it's not a very busy lot. I mean, you might want to look to make sure cars aren't coming through the easement from the Village lot, but it's pretty wide open. It's very visible. But you could walk from Ridgewood Avenue through that asphalt lot and then get to the. the sidewalk once you hit the building and then up to the other asphalt parking lot. I mean, that, you would then be in an asphalt parking lot.
So I guess my question is, and it goes to Councilman Voight's question about the loading space. So that pad for loading?
Yes.
Now we've introduced into that space where pedestrians need to access the staircase, we've now introduced not just vehicles, but trucks as well.
Yeah, I, I don't think the loading would really be used that often, but it is, um, again, this condition kind of exists today. It's, it's, doesn't really get much traffic. I park back there when I come to the site. I pull in off of Ridgewood Avenue and I come into the back. Especially in the evening, it's pretty much empty. There's a lot of room and really a lot of opportunity. It's not a, there's no opportunity to move quickly through there. I mean, when you come in the northbound direction, you're confronted with this small parking lot, which now will have thirty-eight parking spaces in it. So there's really, is really no opportunity to move quickly. It's, um, it's partially underneath the building. But it's just some opportunity for vertical circulation. Again, we're leaving it in place. We think it's a good feature from one side to the other. If you park your car and you want to get out to Ridgewood Avenue to shop or whatever, you do have an opportunity to come down a set of stairs and continue out or through the Village parking lot, which again, would put you into a parking lot and then out to the streets.
Right, but there's just no way to walk back there? That's all, I guess there's no sidewalk, there's no staircase.
There's no sidewalk, I think, is what you're getting to. But I, I don't, I think it's a safe condition. Even the Village lot, if you parked in the Village lot, you are essentially walking through the parking lot.
Okay. And then that, that, um, loading, what did you call it, a pad, a loading pad?
It's just a striped area. There's no, there's no, it's really featureless, other than it's just.
What is the dimension of that? Do you, do you have the dimensions there?
Uh, yeah, I can, uh, it's, I think it's thirty-six feet long because it's two parking spaces in length. Actually measuring a little bit longer, about forty feet. And it's a little skewed in size, it's about ten feet wide, so about, about forty by ten.
Okay. Okay. The, on the, um, the lighting, if we go to C O eight, on those proposed light poles?
C O eight. C O eight is entitled First Floor Lighting and Landscaping Plan.
I'm sorry. I want to go back to the light, the lighting in the back of the building, the light poles and how high they are.
Okay, they are fourteen feet in height.
Okay.
And there are two pole-mounted fixtures along the access drive to East Franklin. And then there are building-mounted fixtures, there are three of them, to illuminate the parking level, which is, um, which is, I guess, on the southwest side of that parking lot. And that would be the same, I think that would be the same fixture, just building-mounted.
I'm done for the moment, just a few minutes, okay.
Melanie?
I feel like we bounced around a little, so I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of pulling it together. You're parking deficient as the plan currently stands. If your parking variance requested denied, how much more deficient will you be?
I'm sorry, could you just rephrase that? I, I was getting.
I'm sorry, if your parking variance requested denied, how many more spaces will you be deficient? Do you have any idea?
I, I show on my plan nine, I, uh, I was, I was informed that the traffic engineer may be testifying that it's ten. And I'm getting a nod from Mr. Brunidge. So let's say the requirement is one forty-one and we're proposing one thirty-one.
And then if some of your spaces, I think, aren't you, aren't you requesting a variance or a, a change in actual size, you ate the eighteen feet versus the twenty feet?
That's correct.
So if that were, were not to be approved, um, do you have any idea how much more of a deficiency you'd be at, at that point?
No, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I, I don't know what could be done to the lobby in order to improve upon that. And then where we don't have an overhang in the rear, perhaps, I think it would result in a, in a building change.
Okay. I think this might be a question just quickly for Chris. Is any of that retaining wall that's currently back there to code or, you know, does it meet any of our current village code or is it already out of?
I think the only issues with the retaining wall would be regarding its height. Anything further regarding its construction or whether any of its footings, subsurface encroach on the Village property, we don't have any information on. The only issue, I think, is height, because you also would have a safety fence on top and that just increases the, the vertical dimension in accordance with our ordinance and its consideration.
The zero or twelve-foot setback between the break-o-rama site and your, I guess that'll abut your parking, is that?
Well, it would abut a structure, it's, it's.
Oh, this, these units here, okay. Is there any, does that leave, that, you've chosen the zero foot setback. Does that leave any specification or limitation on what can be placed in the break-o-rama?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'm not an expert of the building code. I think the architect may be better suited to answer that.
Okay. Um, and you did say, and I believe my last question, you did say an ambulance could fit underneath, but not a large one? I didn't know if I heard you correctly and I didn't want to interrupt.
A what underneath?
An ambulance would be able to fit underneath.
There's vertical clearance for an ambulance, that's correct. I, I believe the maximum height for an ambulance is, um, is a hundred and ten inches, which equates to nine foot two, um, based upon my read of the federal standards. It could fit under there. We really don't see it going under there, but it, but it could.
Okay. All right, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Debbie?
Yeah, if we could just look at C dash O four, one more second. I just want to make sure I understand it properly. Couple questions with my board members. So coming off Franklin Avenue, even though you're showing a line around the parking area, you come off Franklin Avenue and you can make a left into the units on level two, right? You come in and you can make a left into that park?
That's correct. We're showing a full movement driveway there, that's correct.
Great, so can you just show me if I pull in and there are no open spaces, how am I getting out of there? And if there's another car behind me, how is he getting out of there? And how does that work? Where does the circulation flow?
Well, that, that's where we, we think that this would be, you know, first of all, start with the assigned spaces, that, that would be an opportunity to assign them. So the residences, so that you, and we would have signs there saying that.
In other words, if I, if I rent unit one B?
Yes.
Unit one B is assigned a spot? And am I also assigned spots on the Franklin app side as well?
I don't think the parking, I don't think they've worked it out yet to see what the mix would be, to see how the assigned spaces would go. But the, the first level, first floor level, which is what we're referring to, um, is residential only. It would be assigned and signed to be only residential. I think over time, it would, it would clearly be just for the residences.
I under, I, I just want to make sure you and I are saying the same thing. So again, unit one B has one assigned spot, unit two B has two assigned spots. Those are assigned by unit, not just to residents, because?
Yeah.
Isabella could live with me or Melanie could live in the same building, but I just want to make sure I know that my spot is the third one in from the left.
I think that that is the way that it would go. I don't think that it's been completely vetted out yet as to how that would go, but that is an opportunity and that's something we see in these types of residential buildings, that it would be assigned specifically a space and a number, not a free-for-all of you're in this lot and you go anywhere you want.
I almost think from a resident's standpoint, if I lived there, I wouldn't want to pull in and then have to figure out how to get out. And if someone pulls in behind me, then they have to figure out how to get out. That is a problem not to have a circular flow there. So I would think you would need to assign those to certain apartment buildings.
I, I agree. I concur that that, that, that's a good, that's a good idea.
Also, could you just show me on, and I don't know where it would be, I guess it would be C four. So if I'm moving in and moving out, I am parking in the, uh, it's towards the top on the left, correct? It's my loading zone?
That's an opportunity for loading, yes.
Where would I, where is the elevator to take me to my apartment if I am on the third floor?
Well, there's a, there's a way to go from here, uh, from the loading space through and then access the parking. One of the features that I failed to mention is there's connectivity between the parking lots on the, on the ground floor site plan. We have an access drive. So one could park here and then walk through the structure and get to the lobby, which then would take them up. So that's an opportunity. If you had a larger vehicle and you felt like you had to use the loading space, you spoke to building management, you said, that's where I'm going to be on such and such a day, on a move-in day, you could park that larger vehicle in this location and then you could walk through and get to the lobby. If you have a smaller vehicle, like a car, a van, something like that, you could just use one of the parking spaces, even your assigned space, in order to move in. So these are apartments, not big homes, but there are some things that arrive.
So Amazon delivery, are they parking in the loading zone?
They, they, that is.
Moving vehicles, moving beds and all that?